Okay, let's get started. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to March 3rd, 2025 City Council Work Session. We would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. Got a lot of people here tonight, got a big crowd and a lot on the agenda. So let's jump right in. Item A is Link Transit update. This time I'll recognize break of transportation right now.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, if you recall, it was actually last June we were here for a work session. We started the project for Link Transit's Transit Development Plan, which is a five-year plan. The route from services also include is a facility site study. Link Transit's been in operation for almost going on nine years, growing each year. This is a topic that not only just from an operations standpoint, we need to sort of take a pause and look at our system, see what we can adjust and change, but we've hit a lot of the high demand areas around the city. You know, right now we have a temporary hub downtown, which is basically two bus shelters outdoors, no facilities. And then our contractor takes care of the maintenance, or the service provider takes care of the maintenance of our equipment. So what this study has done is looked basically five years onboard to the future, and also looked at possibilities for a passenger transfer hub and an operations and maintenance facility. Kimberly Horn was selected to do this study for us. As I mentioned, we began in 24, basically took a whole 2024 to do the process, which included two steps of public engagement. We wanted to ask not only our riders the things that they'd like to see, and we'll talk about that tonight, but also our nonprofit agencies, our employers, and other agencies that use our system. So tonight, Mary Kay is back with us. She was with us in 2024, the last work session. She's asked to be able to stand, if that's okay, so she can point some things out to you, and I'll run the presentation. And of course, you know John A. there. So we're out here answering questions you may have after the presentation.
Okay. All right, welcome, Mary Kay.
Thank you. So good evening, council members, Mayor. Thank you so much for having me again. It has been quite a while. So part of this presentation is a little refresh on the study process, data that we collected and analyzed for the facility portion of the study, and also the transit development plan. So we'll get a little bit of a project overview and then get into each piece of the project separately. So we spent quite a bit of time just looking at the current system, also the operating environment that Link Transit serves its passengers in, developed some recommendations, identified needs and gaps to make sure that our recommendations supported those. And now we're in our refinement phase. So we've been talking with the public, stakeholders, city staff, council members, in order to make sure that we're addressing all concerns. And then once we have a final plan, we will present that again for a final approval. So we'll start with our facility site search and what the process was that we went through to identify. We're now kind of at our final pool of parcels, but before that, we want to give you an idea of what some of these facilities could look like, what we're aiming for. So you hear operations and maintenance facility or transfer hub, you think loud, smelly, noisy. But it doesn't have to be like that. They can actually be very attractive and integrated very well into the community and be a real community asset. So we have a couple examples that we'll get into from right here in this region. So you'll see over here the Part Regional Facility, Howard Cobb Travel Transportation Center. This is in Greensboro, North Carolina. This opened in 2017. This was within operations and maintenance facility and transfer hub on the same site. And that was for around 11 million in local match dollars. So that wasn't the full cost of the project, but that was the local match for that. Also, federal funds helped support a large portion of that. And this is not constructed yet. This is a regional transfer hub that Go Triangle's going to be operated out of in Research Triangle Park. So this has quite a hefty price tag of $58.2 million. They did receive federal funding for this, so construction will start within the next year or so once they complete their environmental process. But the proposed opening date is 2027. But this includes electric vehicles within that ask, state-of-the-art equipment, charging infrastructure. This will be a true intramobile facility, so hence the larger price tag on that. And this is just another example. This is an older facility in High Point, but it can very well be easily integrated depending on the shape of the site, where it's located, to look like another municipal building or another community facility. This is just a transfer hub, but this accommodates several vehicles and facilitates transfers throughout the day. Again, this is the Asheville Transit Center. This is a very narrow kind of pull-through facility, but again, we can make this fit. This type of facility works well for whatever the needs may be, and it won't stick out like a sore thumb. It can be incorporated well into the community aesthetic. And this is my favorite. This is the Community Transportation Center in Greenville, North Carolina. This is just the transfer center, but this is shared with local Greenville Transit, Campus Transit, as well as regional providers and intercity, Greyhound, those types of facilities. But this was $8 million, opened in 2018. But as you can see, really beautiful. This has been featured in many architectural publishing publications, and it's just a really, it's a real gem, I think. And then this is an example of a strictly an operations and maintenance facility. So definitely a more industrial look to it, but it can also incorporate really nice features. So this is Go Rawley's operations and maintenance facility, state-of-the-art technology. They have a mixed fleet of diesel and compressed natural gas vehicles, so their equipment is also mixed to support that fleet. But you can see, I don't know if you can tell from there, but we have a couple more adjustments. A lot of glass, a lot of like human-scale signs, so it doesn't feel so just stories and stories of concrete, really attractive. Public meeting space as well as training facilities for meetings, safety meetings for the operators. City staff has procurement meetings here, bid meetings. It's a full-use facility for all city staff and some public meetings as well. And here are just some more images of how they incorporated public art. Again, a lot of glass, a lot of green space, lounge areas for the operators. It's a really beautiful facility, although it is strictly operations and maintenance as a primary focus for that. So our facility site search, initially, we were trying to find a site that could maybe be large enough to support operations and maintenance facilities, siding and transfer facility. But we did have a couple search zones, so it was difficult to find a site that large based on the programming exercises that we did with staff to support both facilities. So to look at them separately, for a transfer center only, we needed a minimum of 1.2 acres. And for an operations and maintenance facility, a minimum of three acres. We wanted to stay within a reasonable distance of the current downtown transfer hub, so we didn't disrupt operations too much and have to redesign the system to serve a new facility, either the operations or the transfer hub. You know, you put an operations facility too far out, the vehicles are going to be traveling quite a distance to start their route, which can equal some waste there. So we wanted to make sure that we were being efficient with the current operation. So this is to give an idea of where some compatible sites had been popping up. We did have quite a bit of luck in the downtown area finding some sites based on our website search requirements. So again, our programming exercises with staff, we just want to make sure that we incorporate all the space necessary to facilitate any desired activities. So how many boarding bays do you need? Do you need customer service space? Do we need a covered facility, air-conditioned for passengers? Operator-passenger facilities, parking, things like that. So this is just a test fit concept that we used, that we developed and used when we were searching for the site. So if a site was compatible, we wanted to kind of, we could break this up into different, you know, move the parking around or change the shape of the boarding island. But this is essentially the amount of space that we would need on a site. So we use this to, once we found a compatible site, would this fit on that site? So we do have a preferred option. We've narrowed it down. It's 1.45 acres, so almost one and a half acres. And it does offer that additional capacity if we want to maintain some level of public parking. It is a half a mile from the current transfer hub, which offers some flexibility. We don't have to reorganize the system too much to serve this new site. And there is additional space for on-street boarding if you want to accommodate additional transit agencies, Part, ACTA, Greyhound. We want this to be a true intramobile facility, so this provides a lot of flexibility for us. And a similar programming exercise for the operations and maintenance facility, which led to the development of this test fit concept for maintenance bays, lifts, space for pair transit vehicle parking, employee parking, training rooms, meeting space, just enough to accommodate all the staff of operations and administration. And also fueling and bus wash would occur onsite with this concept. So the preferred, the preferred option here, it's 3.4 acres. It's within roughly a mile of the current transfer hub, and it does provide good access to major roadways, bus-only entrance to avoid conflicts with employee vehicles added in, made as a potential brownfield candidate, which might give you tax credits and help with procurement. So we performed an evaluation of all the sites, and our two preferred options rank better for ease of acquisition and constructability. You know, the site's not too difficult to develop, utilities, extending those kinds of things, as well as just where it's located in the community. What's the most beneficial for the city of Burlington and Link Transit to move this process along, but also provide a value to the community itself? So we do have facility funding options. So as you've noticed with some of those other examples, the price tag can get pretty steep pretty quickly for these facilities. But federal funding is the primary way to fund these types of facilities. So the Bus and Bus Facilities Grant, 5339B, and also the Low or No Emission Grant Program. These are two opportunities that are coming up, so we can apply for those for a good portion of this project to be covered up to 90% with federal dollars. So the Transit Development Plan, we did this in conjunction with the facility site study because if you're looking at changes to the system, want to make sure you're incorporating any major facilities that we live in that study. So we started with evaluating the current system. Where does it run? What's working? How is it performing? Who's using it? And how do riders feel about it? So this is a fairly new system, operating since 2016, and ridership is growing very rapidly. This is a very successful system, and Link Transit has done a very good job of covering a good amount of distance with limited resources. So applause to Link Transit for what they've accomplished. So looking at the current operating environment, we tried to assess what we call transit propensity, which is across the service area, where are there populations that are likely to need and or use transit? So we look at the density of population, where are jobs, low-income households, zero-vehicle households, and where are those populations are located most densely and where they overlap? That's where you see those darker shaded areas there. This kind of gives us an idea where are those needs and gaps across the service network, and how good a job does the transit system do of serving those areas? And it answers a pretty good job. So Link Transit touches most of these areas. We did notice some gaps, you know, north of the screen route here, in between the purple and the orange route there. Some potential for service coverage, but overall, does a good job of touching those heavy areas. We also looked at the current usage of the system. So where are folks affording and accessing major destinations? And you know, what are those high-demand destinations across the service numbers? So you can see this graduated circle map here. The larger circles indicate a higher ridership that needs stops. And then this map over here, I like to call very creepy but useful data. This is GPS-enabled devices. We track where the trips are going across the network. And where there's a density of trips that end, then you can see the darker shading there across the area. So we try to use all these pieces of data to mash together. Where are there, you know, just outside of transit, where are people going in general? And that's, that tells us, is the transit system serving those high-demand destinations, even for those that are not using transit, could they get to these high-demand destinations if they were to use transit? And this is telling us where the folks that are using the system, where are they going? And then transit propensity tells us where those needs and gaps might be that we could rearrange the system a little bit to better serve those populations. We also talked with current riders, and what they told us is, we love the system, we just want more events. We want more service. We want plainer service. We want more frequent service. We want weekends. So this is very common and reassuring to hear from the public, and we just want more of that. And then for FTA guidelines, we do have to present the possibility that we be locating, relocating the facility through public outreach to folks. So we did ask, what amenities would you prefer at a new, potential new facility? And very common, just more benches, more shelters, better amenities at the transfer hub for a more comfortable waiting and safer waiting environment. So key takeaways, Link Transit is doing a good job with the resources that it has, serving where folks want to go. There are a few needs and gaps across the system, but this presents us with opportunities to, you know, in some of these lower-density areas, if we want to redistribute some resources to serve these high-demand areas, there are opportunities to use different modes, like on-demand, smaller vehicle transportation. This could be branded as a pilot, Link Plus, and we'll talk a little bit more about this when we get into the route-by-route recommendations. But there are some opportunities for different service delivery modes that would free up some resources to shift to some of those high-demand fixed route bus routes. And then so all the major bus, fixed route bus changes are focused on those high-demand routes. So looking at all the data, talking with the public, currently, Link Transit's system operates every 90 minutes. So one of our major goals was to get the frequency up, so at least 60 minutes wherever possible. And this is all within cost-neutral, not increasing the budget. How can we do this with the current revenue hours that we're working with in the system? We want to maximize connectivity. This is a very, you know, Burlington is very well-seeded across the region. We want to make sure folks can make those connections to Part System, to Go Triangle Systems, some of those major employment areas and major educational institutions. So maximizing connectivity across Burlington and across the region wherever possible. So this is the current transit system, very hub-and-spoke. Everything comes downtown and then goes out from there. So if you're making transfers, you have to go all the way downtown, make the transfer to go back out. So the orange route, just so you can use some context, North Part Library is up here. Alamance Community College is out here. Coen Health, sorry, Regional Facility is here. And then the Gibsonville Senior Center is here, also served for Elon. So we might pop back and forth between the two masks, but just to give you an overview, and we do have more detailed slides that cover route-by-route changes, if you have questions about those. But just to give you an overview of how we achieved the increased frequency. So Gibsonville Senior Center currently travels along Business 70 to downtown. It's a quite a long route via Elon. So in our proposal, this blue route would not go downtown. It would operate every 60 minutes between the Gibsonville Senior Center and the Regional Health Center. The red route would also be shortened to not go all the way to the Health Center, but it would terminate at the Garden Road Walmart, providing connections to the blue route if you wanted to continue. Or you can still get a one-seat ride from downtown to Alamance Health Center along Business 70. It's not really a new route. It's covering what was formerly provided by the blue route, but it's the new pink route. I'd say the biggest change that we're proposing is the green route. So where you see this DMR, that's where the green route currently operates today. What we're proposing in this low-density area, still maintain service levels in this area, but it would be provided with the smaller vehicles, either vans or small 22-foot cutaways branded Link Transit. This would be called Link Plus. So pilot program, on-demand, folks could schedule trips via an app or call in, as they do today, for a pair of transit ride. But they could get rides point-to-point anywhere within that green zone, or also get connections to the North Part Library or the downtown transfer hub to still feed into the transit system, but providing that mobility within this area. This actually provides a higher level of mobility and flexibility for the folks in this area, but the level of demand is such, about three passengers an hour compared to other routes, that it could be absorbed by the current pair transit system. So this would not require an additional vehicle or additional revenue hours. There are already vehicles operating in this area throughout the day. They could very easily kind of absorb those passengers, and then the revenues spent on that route could be used to increase frequencies elsewhere throughout the system. In order to maintain and not overwhelm this new system, we did propose rerouting with purple routes to cover some of the higher-demand stops along the current green route, like the Lakeview Apartments, would now be served by this purple route. So some other opt, for this, all the routes would operate every 60 minutes. This would be an improvement over nine minutes, except for the orange route, which is just, it's a very one route. It serves major destinations, and to truncate it would mean kind of a McPoney, Community College, and we just don't want to do that. It just recently was extended to Meven. So to increase frequency on this route would just mean adding another bus and increasing the cost. So for another, for another transit development plan, but to keep this cost-neutral, we're looking at how to rearrange the depth tiers that we have currently. So we do have a couple options for this yellow route here. Can't wait to go back here just one second, Mike. So as you notice, the purple route and the green route kind of create this loop in northern Burlington that meet up at the library. So this area is currently covered by the purple route. We're proposing a reroute of the purple just to go to the library and then down to the Meven Street Walmart. To keep this at every 60 minutes, a new route, a new route, the yellow route would cover this area, which serves some major destinations like the Women's Shelter, that we want to make sure maintains service. It would still provide a connection at the Meven Street Walmart, but we have a couple options. So this yellow route with potential funding from Hall River could extend to Hall River and provide service to the Food Lion Shopping Center. Or it could be extended south, covering this area that was identified as a potential gap in the service network, headed south to the Alamance Community, to the Alamance County Administrative Building, to the Courthouse in Bram. So if that were to be the choice, this would allow the orange route to have a more direct route to the Community College and on to Meven by staying on 40, and the yellow route could serve those local destinations. So these are the two choices, and John has been communicating with Hall River, coordinating the potential for that. Coordinating the potential for that funding partnership, but this is also a, this is also an option, depending on how.
Is that, is that either or or both?
This is either or. This is either or. So we have, we have the hours available to make this route happen, but reliant on funding, it could also be extended to Hall River.
That's best on Hall River participating.
Exactly. We would need a funding partnership at Hall River to extend that service. And then if anybody has any questions about the routes in particular, we can kind of focus on those. Otherwise, I might just skip to the green route. So just to give you a little bit more detail, up close, the micro-transit zone or the on-demand transit, transit zone of demand response has many names. It does provide a little bit of additional coverage in an area where we did see that there might be some need. There might be a low-density area that's tough to serve with a bus. The most efficient way to operate a transit service, if you've got a big bus, you want to put it down on the street and pick up as many passengers as you can. This area is low-density, it's more rural, and it's a little hard to navigate into some of these pockets of need with a larger bus. So this micro-transit or demand response zone would provide Link Transit that flexibility to serve these lower-density pockets without having the resource spent on a larger bus. So any questions about this? And this is a new concept, but this would be a pilot, which would provide the city the flexibility to make adjustments as needed, depending on demand.
Any questions?
So again, all routes operating at 60-minute frequencies, except for the orange, which would continue to operate at every 90 minutes. We would maximize the schedules to make sure that connections are optimized at these points. So at the Regional Health Center, at the Garden Road Walmart, at the Meven Street Walmart, and then at the Transfer Center. Of course, those connections would be optimized in the schedule. So incremental changes, this isn't going to happen overnight. This is a five-year plan. We can phase in these improvements. All routes except the orange route would operate at every 60 minutes. The new on-demand service would provide this flexible, either by app or by phone, service Link Plus as a pilot. But we think that this is a great solution for increasing frequencies, providing those additional connections. There are a couple trade-offs, where there was a one-seat ride, you might have to make a transfer now. But if those connections are scheduled well and optimized, we think that this could be a lesser trade-off. But the goal was to make these improvements without increasing the revenue hours or the overall budget, and we think that we've achieved that with this plan. So as Mike mentioned, we are in our next phase of outreach. So we've been talking with the public at pop-up events, the Transit Center, the library. We're trying to schedule some time at Garden Road and Meven Street Walmart transit stops. We also had several focus group meetings with community, neighborhood communities, community organizations, and then educational institutions and nonprofits. So we are continuing this outreach through, I think, the end of this week. Website information, flyers posted on board the buses with a scannable QR code so folks can take that survey. And this is just an idea of, just to give you an idea of how many stakeholders that we've had contact with, conversations with. Everyone is very excited about the increased frequency and the potential for better connections across the region. And then just, this is the survey that's posted on board the buses. If everybody has your phone handy. I would hate it if you scanned it, took it. I would hate it if you scanned it, took the survey. Knocked all the servers a bit. I'll take any questions and... Oh, sorry, we do have six steps. So public and stakeholder outreach is wrapping up. We will finish refining those recommendations based on input. We will come back to council in April and ask for action regarding the facility study. We're going to ask for confirmation of our locally preferred alternative for those sites and endorsing the transit development plan. Then we will be able to complete our federally required Title VI analysis and will begin the NEPA process, which is also required for any major facility study, and apply for federal funds once they come out.
So a couple of things, just, obviously, Mary Kate and Mike and John talked about how robust our system is for nine years old. It's fit for pretty rapidly. And I think way back when Link Transit was formed, the premise would be that it would not be a burden to the taxpayer, that we would leverage federal funding to really be the driver of this. And largely, I think we're proud to say that we've accomplished that. We continue to grow using federal dollars to do that. This next step, as I understand it, would be where we get 5307 monies, we qualify for the 5339, we can pay the grant process. And just so we don't have to get the cart before the horse, we just have to have a preferred site. We don't have to go out and buy land. We can sort of go down the road, have our preferred site. We've done our plan, everything's done. We've had our community engagement, stakeholder engagement. We go through the other pieces and then we see if we secure that grant and then we move forward. Is that correct? Are you sure I heard that in my mind correct?
All of it hinges on the grant process and when those are awarded. And they are competitive. We feel favorable, but we've been encouraged to do this since we started, basically from the state and feds.
I remember Mary Kate and Jamie saying she's never lost one.
But it is competitive, but we are hopeful. We're hopeful. But this is a good step to get started. Can't do any federal applications without having the plan process completed.
And then the other thing I think is important is if we're successful and we develop a transfer hub somewhere in the vicinity of where it's at now, somewhere in the downtown quarter, that'll be, that could be a shared benefit with other transit providers. I think we've talked about that. But that would also further be, it'd just create opportunities for other providers to assist us in the process as well. Any questions from council for John or Mary Kate or Mike? Ron, you good?
Thank you.
Our next item made is going Church Street and Long Road and Ramfusso toward the area of planning. This time we'll recognize our executive director of planning and your governor services general. Please, Jamie.
Mayor and then the city council. So I would like to introduce Alexis Garcia. She is with Priest and Knuckles. We have cities seeking to engage the consultants in preparing and area studies. Here's the sexy name. Church Street, Haun and Ramfusso, study areas. If anybody can come up with a sexy name, you get a gold star. But in any event, we're looking at this area, this corridor, and I think there's a map in here which she will get to. But we're looking at this corridor and studies focused on providing recommendations for revitalization, economic development, growth opportunities, and really taking advantage of the existing strengths of the corridor as they exist today. So without further ado, I'll just let Alexis take the reign.
So hello, my name is Alexis Garcia. I'm a project manager with Priest and Knuckles. We are a multidisciplinary urban planning and engineering firm. We have a long history of working with municipalities on infrastructure, water and wastewater infrastructure and urban planning. And so we have an adept ability to know what cities are doing and have that long history of knowledge to help with anything, especially things like a corridor study. We, I myself am a urban planner in our urban planning group. We have done a lot of plans, comprehensive plans, area plans, corridor studies, all of that nature. And so this is not something that's new for us in having that understanding of revitalization techniques and economic development. It's something that we're very common doing. So when we were brought in to talk about this project, we had a chance to talk with Jamie and try to graph the corridor and going out there and seeing what is it that we need to do? What are we looking to do in this corridor? And we heard about the need for redevelopment opportunities, some of the aging properties on the corridor and the roadway. And how can we get more investment into those properties? And what are those opportunities for redevelopment? Looking at that private investment and what that actually looks like? Does that mean different economic fulfillment tools? Is that public-private partnerships? How can we get that money back into those properties to see new life throughout the corridor, especially with those opportunities for underutilized or vacant properties? The need for kind of actionable recommendations, this is a very common thing, that we don't just want a plan that's kind of set on the shelf. But if we're going to come up with recommendations for this corridor, how can we actually see actionable movement? Just hearing about the transit study previously, it's not just about what are the options, but how are we actually going to make this happen? And where's that funding going to come from? And then, of course, that inclusive public engagement, making sure that we're talking to those stakeholders and residents that are in that corridor, those who are living, addicted to it in the surrounding area and actually using the resources in there and making sure that we're hearing, what do you want to see in this corridor? And how can we encourage more investment in development in that area? Like Jamie mentioned, these are the study area boundaries that we're looking at. Generically, you have Vaughn on the northern boundary. It's primarily along the Church Street corridor. At the centrum on that Hookdale and Church Street corridor intersection, and then the southern boundary along the city limit lines. And so when we're looking at this area, some of the challenges that we're looking at are the limited greenfield opportunity. Your new development is normally looking for greenfield, but when you're looking at that redevelopment on brownfield property, you have to think about remediation of the site, whether issues there might be and how to actually redevelop it. This corridor is primarily auto-oriented, so if we're talking about pedestrian connectivity or connectivity to transit, what does that look like? And how can we have better mixed use of development along the corridor? Sometimes retrofitting existing properties can be difficult, especially if there's existing buildings and you're looking at new businesses. In some cases, we talked about underutilized properties. It's not that it's not used, but how can we get those vacant units filled? How can we bring in new businesses? But sometimes bringing in new properties can be difficult. New businesses such as if there's not a grease trap for a restaurant and those types of things. That can be quite costly to redevelop a site. And then you have those properties that are not likely to change. And so those can be constraints for what opportunities. This might be the school property, Duke Energy, the National Guard site. These are just examples of properties that are not likely to change over in the near future. And so we know the work around those and think about it. In terms of opportunities, like I mentioned, redevelopment of those existing sites. A lot of these sites are on, have large parking lots, which you can now reutilize the frontage and create a more pedestrian-friendly and interface between the pedestrians and the businesses. Looking at that public transit connectivity that we were just looking at the routes, how do those work with this site and bringing in people to utilize it? So it's not just auto-oriented. It can be bringing in those adjacent residents who could be fighting or walking or taking public transit. And then, like I mentioned, those surrounding residents and just making sure. So as we're doing this, moving forward with the study, it's not just these boundaries, but of course, looking at the surrounding area. How do you move in and out of the site and really interact with this area? And so that's just a little bit about the study area that we're looking at. And then when I mentioned the public engagement, this is one of the strongest and most important things of the project. We don't just want to be doing work in a silo, but asking, you are the stakeholders, you're the ones who live, work, and play here. What do you want to see in the area? What kind of businesses do you want to see? What improvements would make it easier for you to utilize the businesses in this area? And so we want to make sure that we're asking those people. So we do have a number of touchpoints with the public to make sure that we are including what the public wants to see. Just a little bit about the, an overview of the approach. You can see the general timeline of the phases, from the kickoff to the baseline analysis, creating that actual master plan and then the implementation. This is planned for a 12-month timeline. And so in the beginning, we want to do our kickoff and stakeholder interviews, sites where we did have a chance to drive around with Jamie a little bit just to see the site and get a feel for the different areas. But we want to have stakeholder interviews, meet with staff. We'll have online engagement, including a project website and online survey. And then a community workshop, really having those conversations hands-on and getting to know the neighbors. And then moving into the baseline analysis is where we're doing the data gathering, starting to look at demographics, existing conditions, evaluating some of those underdeveloped or underutilized sites and just seeing what are those constraints on those sites and how can we better utilize them? And then establishing what the goal, mission and goals are for this area. What are we actually trying to achieve? This corridor doesn't have to be like every other corridor, but what are the specific goals within this corridor so that we're providing guidance as we're moving forward, as we're making those different recommendations to meet those actual goals? And then when we're looking at the conceptual master plan, this will be a high-level overview, or high, oh my gosh, high-level overall plan, creating an idea of what property, a land use plan and opportunities for different properties within the site. So this might include the transit, not transit, thoroughfare routes, looking at land use as well as opportunity sites. We'll have a couple of illustrative renderings for select locations within the area. We love to use a rendering because it brings the vision to life. When you're writing a document down, it's hard to really picture what that is. But by having an illustrative rendering, you're able to, it's more accessible to the public to see what is it that we're actually looking for in this corridor. Will we specifically looking at land use strategies and recommendations to bring that revitalization? And especially looking at redevelopment and economic development tools that we can do that. You'll also notice here that we have the community workshop too. So now that we've already asked the community what they want, start to look at those existing conditions and developing that master plan. This is when we're going to want to go back to the community and say, are we in the right direction? Are we showing what you said you wanted to see? And then making sure, making those tweaks to go into the implementation plan and adoption. Implementation is arguably the most important part of this process to make sure that there's actual recommendations to move forward with the plan. And at that point, it will come back into the Yeltsport for adoption and implementation. And so I'm here to just answer any questions. If any more information about what we're talking about and...
I'm excited, I'm glad we came with this. And I love the reason to develop land use strategies so that people know what can actually go in these buildings in this area. So I think that'll be good for transparency. A lot of times, the community wants to see certain things there, but don't understand that you can't tell certain things. So I'm excited.
So as we start getting stakeholder involvement, will we be able to tie this in with some of the groups that are kind of quasi-affiliated with the electric plant or RAB order? Was that the sort of game plan?
And that was kind of the kickoff of really making this, looking at this, was Western Electric and the RAB. And then when we started looking at that and a plan, we said it really needs to be expanded to really the whole corridor area along Church Street.
What's the timeline of something like that? What is the timeline?
So we're looking at a 12-month timeline for this, which is fairly typical for a small area of a man of this nature. But we also wanted the understanding of the timeline for the conversations around Western Electric and making sure we're aligning with that as well.
There may be some resoning changes we look at. Might be some land use changes and future land use. So it will be that, I'll encompass it as well.
Okay. So if the citizens ask, does this process go through? When will they start seeing some actual changes or modifications to the existing facilities or development? What do we tell, 18, 24 months out?
That's going to be truly dependent upon opportunities that are available and funding opportunities that arise. What we will look at is with the action plan, identifying those short, medium, and long-term goals, as well as looking through those things that are quick to be changed and are visible. A lot of times, that really helps with community excitement when there's something you can see. This might be something as simple as branding flags or maybe one site that gets cleaned up early on. And so I can't say what the actual implementation timeline is. That's completely dependent upon the city opportunities that are available. But we will make sure to identify some quick actions that'll be maybe a little bit easier to attain early on, while longer-range items will require probably more planning or capital to implement.
There's still going to have to be some healthy commitment from existing landowners in addition to the plan. Any land use adjustments that we can make? Any potential funding mechanisms that are out there? It's just going to always be dependent on, at the end of the day. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, the success hopefully is to engage those property owners that, you know, have a dream about their own property and are looking for ways to help fund enhancement or open up new businesses, have brains, or, you know, of other opportunities that could occur along the corridor. Many of the properties, as you know, are smaller properties where maybe there's a way to look at, you know, combination of lots down the road or to further be able to utilize the sites better. I mean, there's all different strategies that will be incorporated onto the table. But the engagement from the beginning for all different stakeholders in the area will be very important.
I think the misunderstanding to, for the public from us talking about this and skipping this off is that this will guarantee that something takes place. And this will guarantee that we'll be prepared to assist and facilitate if existing property owners want to redevelop. And it'll give us a little leg up in being able to facilitate that. Is that figure correct?
And I think we can, you know, any funding source say, we've already been through the process. This is what the community wants. This is what council wants. This is how we see growth and development happening in this area. So I truly believe it gives us that leg up and, you know, because it's something that needs to be done anyway.
Correct. And a lot of other things that we have to be working on. How do we explain to the people or property owners or residents, you know, the process will have to take place? And also, I'm not sure what the vision is and what new or what different might happen. But, you know, it's not going to happen overnight, obviously. But very few things happen overnight very good, just honestly. So, you know, Jamie, what would be the participation of your department in all this as this thing gets started?
We're going to work, we hope to work in conjunction with the consultant hand-in-hand so that we can provide, you know, the day-to-day, what's happening in the area, the different developments that have occurred, some of the issues pertaining to the existing zoning or the incompatibility that we see that prevent, that serves as a conflict for existing development now. So we're also, you know, very interested and willing and want to help to engage the public as much as possible. So through public engagement, different methods to get the word out. And we're very excited about this opportunity.
So from the internal side, if that process starts, it's going to have to be a determined effort to be able to get that information to the people who need to know it. And I would think, Rachel Fornas, and she was, when she started off, you know, was the, I mean, it's going to have to be pretty creative and also fairly consistent with us to try to make sure people understand this is an opportunity and what can make happen in your community. Hopefully, it will make your community a better place to live and work. It's going to take a lot of teamwork.
I have a question. And would the requirements be the same as the prior, the previous corridor? The one that's on the way up? So is this completely separate from that corridor? You wouldn't have those same requirements without the four only existing businesses, right? right? This would be something that could be renewed and existing?
The opportunity, it's a little bit different. So this is really looking at, looking at existing conditions and strengths and opportunities within the corridor. It's not an opportunity, you know, for immediate grant applications or funding. It's a comprehensive look at what, what the vision is for the area and where, how do we seek to implement that in different phases, short and long term?
So as of right now, we're not financially going to be offering anything for this area. It's just a plan of let's see what the community wants in this area. We're going to take this 12-month step to find out from stakeholders and everybody and then the land use and everything to put a plan together, a vision, is all we're doing at this point.
The positive thing about this is if we can make changes that will encourage development.
Pretty creative, instead of waiting on someone to come to us and say, can I, can I get some exceptions to make this happen? Instead of putting them through the process and maybe a PD or something like that or something.
Be a little bit more specific for the area instead of just taking the UGO as-is. This will really be focused on that area.
The type of recommendations that you can expect are going to be policy recommendations. This may be updates, amendments to the code to get the regulations to reflect what you want to see in this area, maybe recommendations for an overarching PD or an overlay of some sort, or even grant funding to go for. So it's not that we would say, oh, we're offering this through this plan, but the plan would set you up for success to say, here are the next steps, we need to amend these things, or here's policies that we can implement to make that happen. The other thing that this can really help with is when you actually have a plan in place already, it means you need to get grant funding because you can say, here is what we were looking for, we want to make these improvements. So when those opportunities become available, you've got a plan in place.
And the goal is to have a plan like this be implemented through adoption as part of the comprehensive plan. So it would be an add-on and that would create the strength associated with it as well. So it would be part of the scope to present the item to planning zoning condition and to, to you all in terms of final adoption.
Any other questions, you come in? Okay, thank you, Liz.
Appreciate it. So we haven't, we haven't asked you to add contracts for this project tomorrow, but I just can set the agenda.
We're not required by this agreement. Everybody do that.
Thank you so much.
All right, next item, item C, Department of Fire Department annual report, there's lots of badges and bills that are not, at this time, we recognize our fire department that will keep.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and with you tonight to present our 2024 annual report. As we cross into 2025, we have been busy pulling together information to share with you tonight, our performance and our accomplishments throughout 2024. So you have before you a copy of our final report that I'll talk about, but also a copy of the PowerPoint presentation so you can follow along if you need. As you mentioned, Mayor, I recognize I've got staff with me tonight. This has been a collective effort from all of us pulling this report together. We all think it's beneficial that we put this information out to make sure that our stakeholders are informed about what we've been up to in 2024. So that's our intent with you tonight is just to provide that overview, probably a little bit about our service demands and trends, our achievements during the year, and then some additions for 2025 that we're working on as well. So again, this is what you have in front of you. Here is our annual report. We intend to start sharing it loudly tomorrow. We've got some printed copies here in the room with this and I, if anybody would like to have one to take with them and take a look at, but it is a lot of information included on our website, as well as finding any opportunity we can to share this information with our community. As I mentioned, it is intended to keep our stakeholders informed of our operations, our activities, our confidence, so we'll find it that way. Talk to you a little bit about service demands. You know, we'd like to make sure that you understand how busy we are, right? So in 2024, we were fronted 10,209 responses throughout the year. That's an average of about 28 calls per day across the city. About 69% of those are EMS no-core related calls and 31% of those are fire-related calls. It's a little difficulty in the red down there, but we've been tracking this across a number of years. We've got data from, for the last 15 years. From 2009 until the end of 2024, we've had a 43% increase in EMS-related calls, 40% fire-related calls, and 42% of the service demands. This is just a heat map of where our calls land within the city. It gives us a good idea of where our hotspots are and where we can anticipate to have high service demands. It's difficult to see on the map over late, but just to give you some idea, if you can pick out any locations in the city where we might have the highest demand for service. Let's talk to you a little bit about our response standards. So in, in last year's report and this report, we've all talked about our performance indicators and averages. We, we want to, we want to be better than the average fire department, so we don't, we don't like to talk in averages. So we've set and adopted the Center for Public Safety Excellence and Commission on Fire Preparations International Best Practice Standards for emergency fire response. And so they talk in terms of the 90th percentile. So that's what I'll share with you tonight is our 90th percentile. So 90% of the time, we respond in this, in this amount of time, it will dance, all right? So that's the way we're framing our performance metrics now. But to give you some idea of what our standards are, some of these things are before our engagement, like call process and time. We have a response standard built in of the CPSC standards of one minute. That's sometimes difficult for us because we are a secondary PSAP, our dispatch barely goes through, hours can't see calm, then comes our communications, so there's a little bit of a delay there. But in general, that should take about, about a minute. Turnout time, that's from dispatch to route, so our folks getting out of the fire station, getting the truck gear on, getting on the fire trucks and rolling out the door. For EMS-related calls, about 60 seconds, and for fire-related calls, because of additional hearing things, 80 seconds. Travel time, from the time tires start rolling to the time we arrive on scene, our goal is to be there within four minutes travel time. So if you add all those things up, within six minutes and 20 seconds, we're going to have folks on the scene helping. Right, those are our goals. How we, how we perform in that, our call process and time, 90% of the time is one minute, 43 seconds for us. Turnout time, our performance is one minute and 12 seconds for less, 90% of the time. Travel time, our performance is four minutes and 40 seconds for less, 90% of the time. Response time, dispatch to home scene, about five minutes, 28 seconds for less, 90% of the time. And then that total, that total response time, six minutes and 54 seconds for less, 90% of the time. What do those calls consist of? This is our, our effort 2024, the type of fire-related issues we're responding to. And you can see a large amount of those are response to alarms. We do have a lot of medical buildings in the city that have alarms. Some courses that aspire to good intent calls, having conditions, and other service calls where somebody needs help, has a question, they call 911 and we end up there trying to help them out. So the impact to our tax base, in 2024, we responded to 100 structural fires within the city that has the same number ironically that we had in 2023. Eight of those were in other jurisdictions where we went to assist, seven of those were on ground, Wayne Gibsonville. 92 structural fires within the city, that's a 7% increase over, over 2023. Amount of property that was involved in fire, 30, almost $31 million in property value that we responded to, 28 and a half million of that was saved from fires, so we contribute 2,381, 2,381,000 was lost in fire within the city this past year. On the life impacts, I'm happy to report that we had no fire fatalities in 2024. We had a multiple year fire, but no, no fire fatalities in 2024. We had one minor injury to a fire victim that was not major at all. On the EMS side of things, we had 78 cardiac arrest patients in 2024. Was successful resuscitation of 19 of those patients, that's a 24% return of circulation, which is well above the national average pre-hospital period of resuscitation and inflammation. So we, we have very fine-trained folks in the medical side that do really, really good CPR and life-saving skills, and they chose this, this statistic here. 63 cases of Narcan were administered for overdose patients, one epinephrine injection for a severe allergic reaction, eight glucose administrations for diabetic emergencies, ten albuterol treatments for rhythm problems, and 33 aspirin administrations for possible heart attacks we did last year. On the training side of things, we continue to have a very strong partnership with Almond Community College for recruit training and certification. That has continued to be a really strong program for us during, during the year. During 2024, we graduated three recruit classes through that relationship with Almond Community College to a very private that. With in-service training, we logged 31,463 training hours in 2024. That is a lot. And I just made note, we were able to, with your permission and guidance, we're able to successfully have our first acquired structure in the last 15 years. So that was an awesome training day, thanks to several of you came out and witnessed that. Very well received by our folks, provide them the most realistic training that we can possibly provide them going into hazardous areas of fire. In our community risk reduction, in our focus areas, our fire inspectors conducted a little 2,300 inspections during, during 2024, that's a 6.4 increase, percent increase over 2023. They conducted 19 higher level fire investigations, so we had to follow a specialized investigator out to perform these investigations. They performed 19 of those with eight result in charge of arson within the city. And we had more than 16,500 in-person contacts with fire dimension-related community risk reduction activities during the year. Our contacts really go much higher than that through our social media outlets, which we have a very strong presence on, and folks respond to those. We see just huge numbers from there. These are in-person contacts related to the property. On the program side of things, smoke alarm installations, we installed 139 smoke alarms in residential homes within the city during the year and conducted 153 child safety C checks. So for our accomplishments and highlights of the year, things that we are very proud of, I mentioned to you, we had our annual report last year, that we had some restructuring that we were considering. I'm happy to report that is fully been rolled out, is helping our department run various tools and provide us with really the ability to do more things than we have been in the past, just by making sure that folks are in the right positions and they're focused on the right things. So we reorganized the department for those efficiencies and matched our mission areas. We re-themed some things, now emergency response division of the folks on our fire trucks, our community risk reduction division, our, to do the fire inspections, fire investigation, health of fire education. There's support services division, which really keeps the tires on things clearly, keeps our fire trucks going up and down the roads, helps us, helps us with logistics and making sure that we have the resources that we need, as well as our professional development of our staff. As I mentioned, we continued a very strong apprenticeship program with partnerships with Almond Community College. This has truly helped fix and help correct our staffing issues. We are getting tremendously more applications now with more diversity and are very, very, I'm very impressed by the quality of candidates that we're getting in that program. As I mentioned, we graduated three recruit classes during 2024 that equated to 13 new members that came to that program since, since the inception, July the year prior. We've graduated 22 hires through that program. We have currently had five of them currently. Professional development and recognition, we, during 2024, had the very first officer meeting where we get all of our officers, which is very difficult to do because we work across three different shifts, have all of our officers in the same place at the same time for a day full of information sharing and officer development. So we've just conducted our 2025 meeting earlier in January, and so it was a great opportunity for us to get together and help develop our staff. And then many of you came to our Christmas awards banquet and number to the year awards, who were recognizing those folks for the great work that they do. These are all peer-based recognition, so they're nominated, reviewed by outside folks and make their recommendation of who gets those awards. So that was very good for our department during 2024. I'm going to let this play in the back background, but this is the partnership with PD on drones and first responder program. This is significantly beneficial to our operations, our situation awareness, and our safety of our folks. You can see this is footage from a house fire we had over in Station 3, this is kind of a hundred, which I don't know if it was on, but this is, this is the type of information we get from that drone. This is further footage, you can literally see overhead view of our folks operating, gives our assistant commanders very good oversight to be able to make sure that our folks are where they're supposed to be, doing the work they're supposed to do, and doing the safety. And help find fire and help find victims, as Chief Baylord has shared with you, I'm sure. It is, we validated the proof of concept on both the fire and police side for this program, very valuable in both, in both sides of the house. So we have extended that to a second drone site at Station 6. Again, just like the first, it's running from Police Department downtown, it gives both fire and police both very, very valuable information. I just mentioned that this really sets us aside in the state as a model for drone and technology use and fire and police, not, especially on fireside, we related offers to it, but I've had many fire chiefs that have been in touch with me, have done several presentations about the value of this program for, for fireside emergency response. Other technology, we've really leaned over in technology to improve our operations during the year. We've, we've made some steps, and I think it really put us into the 21st century for simple things like our daily truck checks. Historically, we've done that pen and paper and had to file those things away. We've taken some steps to translate all that into iPads, it goes directly into our RMS system, keeps an internal log of our daily truck checks of all of our equipment. We also were able to take those iPads into the field to do pre-incident surveys, we write into our RMS system, and it makes it accessible, no two responding to those. As you can imagine, also with the staff, the crew, and all across different stations across the city, communication is difficult in those scenarios. So one thing that we use technology to help with are message boards. We have these in each of our fire stations, and we can push out information in those boards to make sure that people are updated about policy changes or any type of, any type of information we need to put out those boards to keep our folks informed and connected to the department. And then more recently, we have installed vehicle remote diagnostic telemetry systems and homebody camera systems on our fire trucks. And we continue to try to make sure that our fleet is reliable, is as reliable as possible and to avoid downtime in our frontline equipment. This is a great step in that. This is equipment that goes on through the This is equipment that goes on through the truck, plugs into diagnostic ports on the trucks. If there's any issue, anything that's going on with the fire apparatus, it automatically sends the service center a message about that, so they can be on the lookout for that, call that truck in for service, and hopefully avoid major breakdowns. As well as the camera systems, front and rear-facing cameras that help reduce our liability and reduce volume to cause trucks. I thought a little bit about this, but again, we did in October have a very first live burn in more than fifteen years for the department, so we're very appreciative of the support of that. And then I couldn't talk about 2024 without talking about the way that our folks in the city department have stepped out to assist western North Carolina following the days and weeks beyond Hurricane Helene. This is a picture of the four crews that we deployed during the month of October, most often in different locations across about a full week period. We had teams out on the ground in western North Carolina helping out, so I certainly appreciate the way that you guys recognize this. And then back home, our folks felt like we needed to do something to help support, so we, the day that's following Hurricane Helene, quickly stood up. Hurricane donation collection center, these are pictures from that, very successful. We were partnered with a local trucking company to do that and recognized by the Chamber of Commerce for that work. This is about more than fifty thousand pounds of supplies that we sent to western North Carolina in about a week's time. So looking forward to 2025, just some things that I want to put on your radar, and some priorities that we're working on. Strategic plan update, we have an act of plan that we put in place in 2019 that mainly because of COVID, we weren't able to fully enact all of our strategic initiatives from that plan. But it was a five-year plan, so we've taken this opportunity to rewrite that strategic plan. So back in January, we had a strategic plan in process, engaged both external and internal stakeholders to help pull together their perspectives of us, how we can get better over the next five years, and then put that together into a strategic plan. We have a proof of draft lab waiting on the final draft, the finished product will get to you, ensure that strategic plan, and we can have more discussions about that soon. Similarly, we have really with some of the annexations and things that are stretching our service delivery, we have taken the opportunity with the manager last year to engage in a station, a fire station location analysis. It's really a study of our response capabilities currently, and then with annexations and growth areas, what does the future look like? How are we able to continue to respond and provide quality service to the city? And at what point in time, where do we need to be thinking about different fire stations? So we do have a draft report of that that I shared with the manager. We are refining that, and sometime in the near future, if we're back in touch, we could have additional conversations about the result of that study. And then, as I mentioned, we've had great successes in building our staff and filling gaps. We are now having initiatives, focusing on strategies to retain them. So we're putting together, putting forth some things in our budget that hopefully will have a great impact on that, to help keep with the folks that we do have, and we don't have to continually have to have those people, new people coming through. And then, as I mentioned to you last year, we are working towards international accreditation of the fire department, very similar to the accreditation that the police department has had us. We have staff now, we have done the reorganization, we have staff in place that are assigned to that, and as we get further into the year, we're going to go as far as we can towards With that, we look forward to our year of 2025, and we will be back with you next year about this time to hopefully share some great success that we have achieved.
Thank you, Chief. That's great reporting. Questions?
Good job.
Chief, if someone wants a firearm, clean that home, it's a residence. Just contact you guys or what's the process involved?
Well, they would, of course, hire the vendor to put that in. We do have an order of supplies that can be registered with the city, so they'd have to just fill out an application to register their alarm. That way, we know it's registered. We have emergency contacts that are accurate and those type of things. But you know, you can go through any alarm vendor that they would like to have installed. We just need to have a pressure on it.
Okay, thanks. Everybody, we appreciate you guys. Thank you, Chief.
Of course. These guys don't think too.
I was gonna say that. They just look, they just look nothing.
It's a lot of white they are. Well, that's right. He said they helped in presentation.
They were supposed to pass out the things off.
Thank you. That's good.
All right, next item, identity is Brown's Chapel Cemetery improvements. This is our Public Works Director, Gary Smith. Good evening, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Seeing I'd like to introduce Allen Ivell. Allen is our cemetery and grounds superintendent. He's going to tell you a little bit about Brown's Chapel Cemetery. It's one of the cemeteries that his division maintains, and he's going to also tell you a little bit about a conversation he had with Henry Landzow. Henry is a graduate of Williams Hospital, and he's got a proposal for preserving the history of that site that he would like to make tonight. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Allen.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'll give you a quick snapshot of how we got here tonight. It's been about a year now that Henry approached me with an idea of a project that he would like to do at Brown's Chapel Cemetery. Hadn't really landed on anything specific, so he and I and Jeff Parsons met out there, and we talked a little bit about the history and how the city acquired the property and all that. So kicking around some ideas over time, he kind of landed on some signage upgrades out there. And I think it's important to note that Henry approached me about this project, and this was not something tied to a school project or a voice house project that, you know, where he had to do it. He just, this was something that he wanted to do to get back to his community. And with that, he did all the legwork, so this was not something that he jumped into my lap and said, here's my idea, run with it. This was something that he did. He did all the legwork and the research and whatnot. So with that, I'll turn it over to Henry.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight in this work session and considering my proposal. Okay, so this is Brown's Chapel Cemetery. It's the view from West Davis Street, and as you guys can see in the bottom left, it's the current sign saying Brown's Chapel Cemetery. And maybe some of you guys are more familiar with Brown's Chapel Cemetery or less, but I'm still, I'm super excited to share with you guys my research that I've done. Okay, so a brief history of the site. So Brown's Chapel Cemetery is actually the oldest cemetery in Burlington, dating back to the early 1800s. There are many different types of people buried here in the site, including multiple war veterans such as John S. Rumbly, who fought in the Battle of Chancellorsville, and many old families of Burlington and children. This cemetery actually highlights the transition of Burlington from a rural town to a more industrial railroad town. And this is because before the arrival of railway in the late 1800s, there have actually been wooden markers for the grave sites at the cemetery. And now we can see that a lot of the old gravestones now have, are made of marble and different types of stones that would have to been imported in via the train. And also, the cemetery originally had a chapel, hence the name Brown's Chapel Cemetery, which was later taken down in the early 20th century. And this was one of the first churches in the area, served as a methodist church, and also later served as a school, elementary school for kids, also highlighting the early educational system for the community in the area at the time. So here's a couple images of Brown's Chapel Cemetery itself and the grave sites. On the left are some of the, how the grave sites are arranged with the headstone, footstone, and footstone, all in a row. And the other two images are shows, show it's kind of part of T, but they're more scattered out and uneven. And also, I don't have an image up here, but there is a section with a wrought iron fence, I think, with grave sites dedicated to a specific family. And this is where we've spent a lot of time thinking about possible ideas for restoration and possibly the replacement of the current sign with a historic marker. Currently, the marker only says Brown Chapel Cemetery circa 1842, and I believe it gives limited indication and contextual referencing of what the site actually holds. And I really think the plaque would serve well to the community and promote the historic district of Burlington since it's within it. And yeah, inform people passing by, just walking or driving and giving them information. And I know some of you may be wondering what this plaque would look like, so I've gone through and done a little bit of design. This is generally an idea for the plaque. It would be an eighteen-by-twenty-four-inch black cast bronze plaque with a post-melt, and the title would be one inch in height for each character, and the historical confirmation would be point seven of an inch in height. And that's just in a large image with a post-melt. And here are some real-life examples of what this sign would look like. As you guys can see, this is a sign, cast bronze plaque in the Arboretum that is also eighteen by twenty-four inches. And the titling for this, the height is an inch, which would be the height that would be on my plaque, on this plaque at Brown Chapel Cemetery, about an inch in height. And the title for this plaque is about point seven of an inch high, which would be generally what the historical information of these signs was. And during the month of January, I thought about some ideas of how, who could make this plaque for us. And SignTech is a local Burlington company who has made signs in the Burlington Arboretum. And I thought it would be really neat to collaborate with a local Burlington company on this possible project. And I received a quote from them, and the plaque would cost approximately $3,300, a cost I was hoping that the city would be able to support or offset. And I'd like to thank a couple of people, Mr. Ivell for helping me move forward with this project and landing on things that would have an impact on members of the public works like Gary, who's here with us tonight. And the information I received from my research are from the Mayne Memorial Public Library and some of the North Carolina State Archives online. And thank you guys again, the City Council, for considering my proposal and my previous meeting two weeks ago with the Historic Preservation Commission, which I had, and they're very supportive.
So Craig, can we, you guys are starting to build your conversations, as we're moving through that process, can we take a look, put this up there to council and kind of see what that project would look like and if there's any additional needs to enhance it?
That's the, there's always been a lot of concern or interest in that piece of property in the cemetery. Back to a number of years, various people who've had, bothered history or somebody even had long-term potential family people in that, took a turn there. Help me in terms of the maintenance of it now. What is that all involved?
Excuse me, can you?
The maintenance of the cemetery.
Oh, the current maintenance? So I'll speak a little bit to that. So we do very minimal maintenance over there, and that's not, that is kind of by design. It's not that we're neglecting that property, but we don't want to create a park there where we're inviting a lot of folks out there. We want to keep the historical context there. A lot of, there's been a lot of vandalism over the years, stones knocked down, stolen, and there's some places, for instance, where there's indentions in the soil, and those are the only way that you know that somebody would be buried there. So, you know, we don't want to go in there and cover that up and create a nice turf area. So we had done recently some tree work as far as tree removal, more safety issues in there. Along the right side of the property, we pulled down a block retaining wall that was there that had fallen down, and it was a safety issue for the neighbors there.
Do a lot of glowing leaves over there as well.
Correct, yes, sir.
Craig, can we find where $300? The council halls, we can find it.
I think we can pull that off, but I got it. We can take our Gary's budget.
Gary's definitely.
But if that, if you're comfortable with the wording and the style, we can make that happen.
I mean, I think we need to look at it and look and see, is there any other, you know, not spend the time, like, is there anything else that we need to do to add emphasis to what it is and can we propose?
About replace me the brick wall that you took down. I've been up there several times, but was it on the right side?
It actually goes around, it was on the right side of the property and along the back, but the, it doesn't necessarily define the property lines. On the backside, there's actual burials beyond that, so what you would think of as the neighbor's backyard. And we discussed putting a fence back up there, but didn't pursue that, so.
Are you saying that we need to look at that?
I think so. Could it sort of separate that neighborhood that's right behind there? Maybe like those little black, red colored, red states.
Wroughton?
Wroughton, yeah, like that. Young man's not taught us this probably, I suspect.
I like that blotting the whole place would make some sense. It would give it a sense of, again, a lot of people have interested this site over the years.
A lot of people walk by there and then.
That's right. And, you know, if you get, something like this needs to be taken care of. I know what you're saying, this is years of Jeff, it's hard to take care of that property because it's not, it's just very difficult.
Would you like us to maybe look at the sign now and then, before we get other options that we're standing? Yeah, that if we need to do physical, that may be something we put in the budget.
Thank you, we appreciate your interest and being here.
Thank you guys so much.
Allen, thank you as well. Our next item, identity is boards and commission reports. We have planning design commission, this time we record this, planning laws in the next year.
We came again, providing zoning information, only had one item on, and that was the progress of the zoning project that the applicant is seeking, the changes only from meeting that's a general business limited use. So this slide just really summarizes the sequence of requests that the applicant had made. If you recall, the first request, going through this limited use process, the first request was for sixty-eight uses, sorry, sixty-seven uses that were back in November of last year. Then they came back. Then they came back with some modifications, reduced the number of uses to 39, removed one of the parcels, that was in December. Then they modified their request to multifamily only, so that's the only requested use at this time. Council heard the application during your public hearing back in February. It returned, the matter returned back to the Planning and Zoning Commission late February, and the most recent application received a Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation four to one.
Previous was turned down.
Correct. Correct. And that was, that was, that was when there was a lot of conditional uses. Just wanted to highlight some of the questions that came up during the Planning and Zoning Commission pertaining to buffering of the property. And as, as you know, there's no site-specific plan that the applicant could present. However, the buffering around the perimeter of properties for new development is all dependent upon rezoning of the property and the adjacent zone. So for this particular area, you would be looking at no less than a type C buffer, which is a 30-foot buffer. And in most cases, it would go up to a type D buffer, which is a 40-foot buffer. So this roughly illustrates, very, very roughly illustrates the type of buffering and landscaping that could potentially occur on a property, not talking about the type of development or anything very specific. However, this shows in the lighter green, a type C buffer, where that could essentially occur based on the zoning and the site configurations here. And then the type D buffer would extend along this side based upon, again, the zoning that bugs the property. Then you would have your traditional streetscape buffer, which is trees along road frontages. And then, in addition to those buffering scenarios, and that's just around the perimeter, for multifamily development, where the buildings exceed, would exceed two stories, the buildings have to be placed at least a minimum of 100 feet back from a property that has a single family home. So I've tried to illustrate that using this gray shade, and this is not the scale by any means, but it shows that the buildings would be even further set back into the property. This was not shared with the Planning and Zoning Commission or the applicant, but I just wanted to illustrate these different UDO requirements to you at this time.
So where's the interest?
It remains to be seen.
There's an site plan, so.
During, during the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, obviously, traffic congestion, those types of topics came up. And really, it will be dependent upon, access is going to be dependent upon NC DOT and where they feel appropriate placement may be, as well as the turning movements. And I'm not a traffic expert, so I'm not going to go into too much detail. But all of those, all of those things would have to be further studied because we certainly know that there's congestion already in that area.
Same people spoke of.
Yeah, there may have been additional family or two that spoke as well, but, but yes.
As a practical matter, even if they have a site plan with NCDOT under, NC DOT could change it. So.
And you know that NC DOT is part of our technical review site plan committee, so they would be involved in this process from, from the beginning.
And we're still looking at how many apartments, 100 and 100? A little over 100?
Well, I must have hit that, hit in that slide, but basically, the proposed zoning, you're looking at roughly 60 to 70 units because the, the density would increase from what exists today, 4.8 units per acre, to 24 units per acre. So, so included in the packet, we're asking this matter to be placed on our March 18th planning public hearing. So just looking for your consensus on that.
Can you, you reference no site plan was required for this. What, what qualifications are, how does that occur? I mean, in terms of what type of development, you say there's no site plan, I, I mean, especially when you put it in here in the middle of a bunch of residential development around it.
Plan.
So, so the applicant is coming, their application has been filed under limited use rezoning. So under our limited use provisions, there is not a site plan that is, that is a part of that process, so we cannot require it. You, you may be referring back to when there was what was called a conditional rezonings. And so that mechanism, limited use rezonings are also a type of conditional zoning. They're not the same as, as what you have heard in the past. The planned development of rezoning application process is, is really the way that the developer could commit to enhanced buffers, specific number of density or units, preservation of different areas of the site, different other standards. So you have that option, and in fact, it was mentioned to the applicant during the Planning and Zoning Commission, should you want to pursue that, but it really is their choice whether or not they want to do that.
It's, it's their right to choose. For us, it's, it's a question of resentment.
That's correct.
It's a resent.
In fact, the truth of it is, they're not telling you what it is beyond the scope of the subject matter for you. It's just whether or not that rezoning is compatible with the neighboring zones around it. The conditional element to what she's speaking of is that, as far as uses are concerned, they are limiting themselves. So it makes it a mechanism that become more compatible with it, but you don't get to see what it is proposed. In fact, if they were to show you something, you can't rely on that as well as anyone else can rely on that, because if they rezoned.
So our, our responsibility is to determine whether or not it's feasible and acceptable to take this from MDR to GPOU. And if so, we have to trust the UDO and the TRC to get a conducive development in there based on what we spent all the year doing development in the UDO.
Right. And if you were, I think you, you mentioned in the past regarding this, where there was a comparison to the development across the street or some of the development in that area. You know, subsequent to that time, the Unified Development Ordinance was, was adopted. It was enhanced to what was in the zoning ordinance previously. And now we have concrete standards that, that a developer, you know, needs to adhere to, specifically dealing with commercial and multifamily and all, and all different matters, signage, aesthetics, landscaping, screening. So that helps to, the 600-plus page document helps to guide the development in that, in that right way.
So, and just out of this case, in case if someone does want to forward, the developer knows for an end, there's still some restriction guidelines that he has to, or she has to apply to, is that correct?
Yeah, even at pre-applying for rezoning, we go through that analysis with them during the pre-application conference meeting. From the beginning, the standards are set with, with the developer, and it's up to them in terms of what direction that they want to go.
To our benefit, the limited use designation took it from 67 to 39 by their choice, then from 39 to one by their choice. But that's so they could apply under the limited use standard. That's the extent of our knowledge, as we know it will be one use. Is that right, David?
It was like in the old days, they, they would come in there and it would be a straight rezoning, general business, for example. And all of a sudden, the chambers would be absolutely full, and the developer would work like the digits and try to give some idea about what he was going to do or even without crossing the line, Bob would let him cross the line. But at the same time, he was inching up toward it with all that courage to the list of a litany of bad things that could be put into a general business zoning, and, you know, would have everybody just up in arms. So this limited use narrows that down. But you still can't come forward and put forward a plan if it's something that the council could rely on for the neighborhood.
So it was remanded back to PNC, this is now passed, comes forward to us, everybody's in agreement on March 18th.
This, this is somewhat similar to the parish theater rezoning, that, for someone who lived on that Hickory Avenue, that was a significant, and Bob, you remember that one, do you not?
Very well.
Very well, yeah.
But that was, that was conditional, was it not? Before, that was conditional.
Yes.
Two stories, 65 apartments.
Well, I don't, I can't tell you what they're going to be presenting should, should this move forward.
You, you know what's going to be, you know that they're narrowed it down to one use, you know what that one uses, you just don't know what's going to look like. You just know, you know what the maximum they can put.
Two stories maximum. And the amount is 60, but not 60.
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
Because for some reason in the meeting, I think it's the residents have known that because for some reason 100 apartments was floating around, and I felt like no one ever, you know, corrected that. I think that was the issue because under the current conditions, it already allowed like 40, right? So it's only.
Under the current conditions, it's, well, the density would be roughly five units per acre, so you're looking more at 15.
Oh, 15.
Less than, less than 15.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Jamie over here, just on March 18th.
Okay, thank you.
So you, is that it for PNC?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, next we have the city manager's report, but before that, we've got, I do want to recognize Maggie Massey, we've got that raised crowd, so you want to represent us, can you help with that?
So Burlington New Council has come in and out tonight. This is the first time that we've ever come to a work session. I had no idea how long to tell the children to be here, and therefore, they all, the ones that are left are the ones that either drive or have very flexible ride shares at options. So thank you for hosting us, and I know that we took up a lot of the space in the room, so I really appreciate that. My president, that was so well spoken last time, was unable to be here tonight, and he does send his apologies. He had a tennis game, hopefully he won. But yeah, thank you for letting us come. I will say, this was so much more interesting, in my opinion, to watch, other than just the meetings. Well, they're both very important pieces to the puzzle. This was very interesting to sit and listen to, and I hope that the kids got as much out of that as I did. I do have my staff with me again tonight, Henry, and then Amber as well, and then a few of the kids who are still left. So thank you so much for letting us crash your work session and hang out and listen.
It was good to have you guys listening, just so everybody understands, I don't know what to tell my wife when I'm going to be home.
You know.
So you don't have to know how.
I was trying to like use the like, the getting attached policy, it takes as long as it takes.
Okay, well, that, no, Craig.
Just a very quick update, just as the mayor mentioned earlier, we started our budget meeting for the apartments today. That'll be about three week process, and it went really well today, so appreciate the work that's gone into getting us at least to this point. Did want to mention that Peggy, Julianne, and I will be in New York as of Thursday and Friday, and we'll be meeting with Fitch, S&amp;P, and Booty's to get our bond rating for our bonds, so we're excited about that. And also, with respect to our, our bonds, we do have a couple of bid openings happening very soon. The bid opening on the MAC will be March 11, and the Paramount bid opening will be March 27. And that's all that happens.
Any questions on the agenda or any other questions for staff? All right, we'll stand to chair. Thank you everyone.